Okay, good evening. Apologies for the delay. Welcome to the planning board meeting for July 19. I will start with a roll call. Bob Cox.
Here.
Jamie Pennington will not be here. Heather Rogers.
Here.
Richard Yeager.
Here.
Is here and I want to welcome our new associate member Charlie Molesa.
Thank you.
Here. Great, thank you. Okay, we have three hearings tonight. We have, the first one is for 149 High Street for the Barlet Mau, DOD special permit. The second is for 2327 State Street, a special permit for non-conformities. And the third is for 78 State Street, special permit for non-conformities and a special permit for use. And that is the, those are the three public hearings tonight. We'll begin with the first one for 149 High Street.
I assume I'm coming over here.
Yes.
All right, is Mike Igo on the call?
Yeah, let me just make sure he's moved over as a, it's been, I don't see him as of yet.
He said he was in the waiting room.
Does he have them? Because there shouldn't be a waiting room like this. And also I apologize if anybody is speaking tonight, they could use the microphones. I apologize if you, but you have to keep them very close to your mouth for them to work well. And that's partly because we're bridging their audio or our whole audience because we're still waiting for their comments. So in the meantime, this helps to make sure that folks are remote, including our cordial speakers here, everybody.
All right, do you see Mike on there?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks everyone for your time.
Just to go over.
Sure. Thanks again for your time listening to us present this project tonight. I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible. I'll try and bring a bit of information. I'm going to start with an introduction and a project overview. We'll look at some alternatives and precedent images of other buildings we've considered. And then we've some time for questions. My name is Kim Turner. I'm manager of special projects in the mayor's office. I have with me tonight Mike Igo, who is our quality engineer. I'm going to give the presentation, but he is available to answer questions related to some of the pumping and resorption system. To why we need the pump house. So just a very brief overview of the project, the Barlet Mau in particular. Barlet Mau is in Bridgeport's original town common. Throughout the 16th and 1700s, it was used to wire livestock. It was road gaming and training for the revolutionary war militia. In the 1800s, it was transformed into a park. In the 1805 Superior Courthouse was built. At that time, an inlet for fresh water was cut off from the pond and it became stagnant at that time. There's numerous historic newspaper articles that that sort of pointed the fact that the water became pretty smelly. And the city tried to do what it could at that time with the technology that was available to them to remedy the problem. And in 1891, a wealthy resident purchased a fountain that was installed in the middle of the pond. It lasted, I want to say about 50 to 75 years. And then it sort of became bumped to the top of it, floated away. In 19, in the mid 1980s, a local resident started an initiative to restore the fountain. It was restored. It was quickly disheveled due to the lack of clean waters. There have been waves of trying to remedy the problem. And Barlet Mau brought upon for earlier researches. Next slide please. In the early 1900s, the city hired landscape architect Charles Elliott. He had four major goals, which he expressed to the city in terms of what he believed should happen in the park. The first was to create a protective granite bedroom on. Second was to recirculate the water using the fountain. Third was to create really simple palette of what the beauty of this park is, which would include meticulously sloped mon. Water and high branch trees that would really frame the beauty and simplicity of the Mau. He requested that there be no fire in any type in the park itself. And his fourth recommendation was to complete the northwest corner slope, which is right at the corner of Auburn and High. That sort of became kind of a rubble pile, if you will, that was never fully completed by the city. So the city really didn't embark on two out of four of these recommendations. But the protective granite edge and the completion of the northwest corner slope were never fully realized. Next slide please. So what are we doing here? The project is, in simple terms, we hired a engineering team, state of GEI. And AWS about a year and a half ago, and they've been studying and doing a lot of testing at the pond to really understand the capacity, the problem and how to run it. We know the water is stagnant and unhealthy. The existing pond sediments have very high nutrient loads that are contributing to the harmful algal blooms that we're seeing there. And there's also other historic urban contaminants in the pond. The project, in very simple terms, entails de-watering, installing a liner. And this is important because it's going to separate out the water column from the existing impacted sediment. So that that food source for algae will be completely. We'll be installing a bedrock well to bring fresh water back to the pond and top it off on an as needed basis. And we'll also be creating an outflow to keep the water consistent levels. We won't have that overflowing in the banks in spring. And then the important part, which is why Mike Igo is here today, is we'll have a circulating subsurface circulating water to keep the pond healthy. Next slide please. So why are we specifically here tonight? So the Barlet Mau lies within the DOD and as part of our efforts in studying the pond and the solution to the problem on water quality. We need to construct a small pump house that can hold the wet well and the filtration pump systems and to store and protect this equipment. The addition of any structure within the DOD is a very small structure, but any structure requires special permit from the planning board. This is a necessary change from the original proposal that we had, which was to embed the pump house as a vault within the northwest slope. And I'm going to do that in a moment. Next slide please. So this is a very technical drawing that Mike Igo can speak to a little bit later. There are questions. But this is a detailed from our construction set that really shows what that pump house is doing. It shows the wet well and it shows the equipment and pumping system needed. It also shows that that pipe is gravity fed, so having it above ground is very critical for the health and the function of the equipment. We can go back to the side of this.
You go.
You're breaking up a lot.
Richard, can you hear us any better now?
Yes, 100%.
Thank you. We apparently lost internet connection here at the Cedar Center. I don't know if that will happen again, so we will do our best. So anybody who's been patched in here waiting and seeing our sort of blank or frozen screens, we just want.
Do you want to pull up the slideshow again?
Sorry.
We actually did study and learn alternatives to where to locate and how to design this, this vault slash pump house. This is what you're saying right now, originally intended to build as part of the CTC applications, probably what many new iterations. The call for this location, number one, the Parks Commission felt that this would be too visually prominent. It was a slope that would be viewed from too many.
Richard, are you with us?
Yep, been here. I was listening, but then you dropped.
Okay, did you get just a frozen screen there and pause in the audio? Okay, thank you.
I heard most of it though.
All right, let's try again. So yeah, so this is probably what the last iteration of what you all saw. It's visually prominent because it sort of sticks out right at the nose of the northwest slope. There's a construction sequencing issue because we have this universally accessible playground that's being installed. It's been ordered and it's going to be installed in October. So there was an issue with trying to get the vault installed in time for that playground to be worked in. There's also climate control issues when you have some area of earth like this. It can become a very humid environment that would cause deterioration of some of the electronic equipment that would need to be placed within this vault. And obviously you can see on the section on bottom there, there would be structural and geotechnical considerations and costs related to building such as this. Next slide please. Our team has, and on top of all the other issues that were related to the vaults. As you know, is that this slope just would cause excessive raining exercise, having embedded with massive retaining walls to get into the vaults. We'd also have to remove a large mature tree in the corner of that, to the left of the granite stairway. And again, you know, geotechnical and structural costs for this would be excessive. There would also be an issue with licensing of contractors who would have to get into that, into that facility. Due to engulfment risk. Next slide please. It was suggested at the historical commission that we create an underground vault with a hatch. And that was something that we did consider, but this is problematic. I think if you recall from the detail that I showed in the slides ago, it's really important that that pipe and filtration system be above the level of the water. Because it's gravity fed, so this would definitely create an involvement risk because we have pressurized pipes and pond water that would be above the level of the pit. The permits required to get into confined space and operate in an underground hatch such as this. And then of course, there's the same issues with climate control and structural costs. The engineering team actually originally had proposed this pump house being at the opposite side of the pond. And that was something that we dismissed, as the city dismissed immediately because we felt that having a pump house on the CBS side of the pond would be extremely desolate. Where we have located it along Aron Street because of the great change far less. There is precedent for there being other structures on the pond besides the roof wall that was there in the 1700s. There actually was a fireman's shed in the middle of the pond at one point. There was a fire suppression system that the city at one point after the great fire, we used Barlet Mau. Fire suppression, there are still existing underground pipes under the streets that we would report that need to. So there is precedent for there being structures at this park at one point in time. Of course, there was also the school on the corner of Auburn and High at one point as well, that was previous to it. Next, so. We did look at other precedent for small structures within other parks, including parks that were designed during the time of Holstead and Elliott. These are some examples of other small structures that are placed within parks that are similar in sort of. Original request, what you're seeing on the screen now. It's important to do that again, we'll hear from the Auburns.
Richard, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Richard, we don't have a video. Okay, great. We don't have a visual for you, but it sounds like we can hear you.
I can hear you guys just fine.
I would ask if anybody in the room is using this right now, if you could hold on. I don't know whether that related to bandwidth, but just to avoid any trouble. Okay, Richard, you can hear us?
Yep.
Okay. Try it. All right, so this was the original request that was submitted as part of our special permit. We tried to keep the building very sort of unornate, if that's a word, to try not to distract from the courthouse itself. But as I was saying previously, the elevation down at the pond level is 12 and a half feet below the grade of the street. And the height at the top, the very keep of that roof, there's 12 feet. So we're still six inches below even the height of the street at the very top of that building. We had originally sort of drawn it up with grit, with the option to make it wood clad if cost became an issue. And we wanted materials to sort of complement the courthouse. The request that came through from the historical commission, we actually made a couple of other options, which we'll show you tonight. One was to rotate the buildings with one of the 45 degree angle from the dock. The second is to kind of slide it away from the walkway a little bit. The third was to look harder at the architectural detailing with a strong reference of this view, this will be a brick building. And to look at sort of any of the detailing that could potentially increase this for sort of character. Next slide please. So we did heed that advice. We have rotated the buildings. This is an option being, we have two other, one option besides this to show you tonight. We did rotate the building and slide it back from the walkway. It's showing the plan view on the left. This is one option, which has coin detailing on the corners. It's not the Parks Commission's preference, but the next one that we'll show you is a little bit more preferred. And we are committed to doing a breakfast pod on the weekend. Next slide please. This is the preferred option, at least from the Parks Commission's standpoint, is to have white stone string course at the top and bottom of the building that will complement the courthouse. And again, rotated and back from the walkway as requested by the historical commission. And the next slide is, I don't know if you're enjoying much, but I just wanted to give an opportunity to have anybody ask me questions for the presentation. Next, it's Mike Igo on.
We have wonders, any questions for the applicant?
I have one, if I may. What is the roof material suggested for option three?
Sure, we are proposing a slate-like roof. It may probably not be slateed itself, but it would be sprayed like.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
Yeah, just curious, as far as it shows the dock is right there by the pump house, is that, is the, how is the dock to be used? And is it critical that it be there? Because that's over the.
It is critical. So thank you for asking that. I should have mentioned that before. If you remember the, actually, if you want to go back to the detail that shows the engineering. So again, the pipe is gravity fed and that that pipe is an intake pipe that is going to help with the recirculation of the pond. In order to protect that pipe, we are proposing putting the dock there. The Parks Commission has every intention to bring loading activity, loading recreation activity, as was once in the pond, back to the Barlet Mau. Using flat bottom steps. So we would. Getting a dock and this sort of was the perfect opportunity to both create that regulation activity while also protecting that.
Okay, thank you. So you don't feel there's any conflict with the votes and with Mike?
No, definitely not. It will be shut down for the winter. We anticipate that it's probably going to be used primarily during spring, summer, and fall. Probably shut it down while the fall enters season.
Couple of questions. Is there any noise concern related to the equipment?
There will be soundproofing inside of the building. It's a pretty small horsepower motor, so it shouldn't give off too much noise. I don't know if I can answer that. Mike, are you on the call?
Yeah, I am. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Um, decibel level is probably going to be, the loudest component is probably going to be the ozone generator that we're proposing. It's probably going to be in the, it's a quiet model, so it's probably going to be in the 45 to 50 decibel range. That comes in its own container, but then we can also add insulation or soundproofing around that small box. It's a small box. It's probably like four feet by two and a half feet by two and a half feet high, resides inside. The building itself, the pump house building itself. So I think from the outside, you might hear a low hum when that's operating, but the intent is to have a system that's as quiet as it possibly can be. So the loudest device is probably the ozone generator, because that has a small compressor on it. But that compressor, as specified, is in the 45 to 50, 50 decibel range. Inside the building, it's inside the container itself, but the container's inside the, inside the building. And we can add further soundproofing around that specific device to get that down further.
I think 45 to 50 is not quiet at all. So I'm just curious as to what, what the target might be to add a additional sound.
Well, I mean, as far as target, I mean, as far, 45 to 50 is, I think, and again, I'm not a sound expert, but 45 to 50 is. It's not whisper quiet. It's not a whisper for sure, but I believe it's, it's in that normal talking range. It's certainly not yelling. So I think from that perspective, it's a design detail that as we're going to bid documents in the next couple of weeks here. I think that that's something that we can take a look at to try to minimize that. The ozone generator for us is an important device. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, so the ozone generator is an important device for us because what it does is it, it provides an oxygen-rich water environment. That's something that the existing pond is sorely lacking. And that, that's what causes the, the harmful algal blooms. It all, it doesn't, it doesn't allow us to suppress the phosphorus, the total phosphorus that's diffusing into the pond from the sediment below. So the, the ozone, anything that we can do to, to generate and to implement oxygen and to increase the dissolved oxygen in the water supply. That's going to allow us to have as clean a water supply as possible. So we, we, we view it as a necessary, but I mean, again, we're definitely open to making sure that we're trying to get that to be as low a decibel as possible.
I'm not disagreeing with the need for that piece of equipment. But I'm asking because I would assume that if that manufacturer provides an acoustic jacket for that piece of equipment. Then they would also provide information relating to the decibel level of that production. And I, I think that's important information for you to provide.
That's fair, and I think that's something we'll. That's fair, and I think that's something we'll research and get to. Yep.
In any urban environment where there's exposed equipment, whether it's generators or whatever equipment, there are acoustical treatments that are available and there's a clear understanding of of what can be achieved with that. So I think, I think that's information that we should provide. Um, one, one other question related to the exterior elevations. Um, you, you mentioned that uh, this is designed to complement the courthouse. And how wonder you could spend a minute on uh, how that has been achieved? Uh, beyond, beyond the use of bricks, for example, uh, I mean, the courthouse is very different in its details of this building. This is also very different from a lot of the examples that we use, most of them wonderful little buildings. Uh, so I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about the level of detail and color of
Sure, I mean, I'm, I'm not an architect, I'm a landscape architect, so I'm not sure how much detail I can get into. Uh, but uh, so we had um, the expertise of Charles Ben, who's on the commission, who helped design this building with us. Um, and he had recommended these string forces again to try to mimic the, the lines that you see of the courthouse with the materials. And I'm sorry, I can't enter much more of the architectural detail of that. Uh, but I'm happy to get something back to you that that's some spot, or if there's anything specific that you're looking for.
I guess my, my point is that given, given the importance of this site and given the prominence of this small building, um, I think it's really important to talk about.
Is there something specific that you're looking for besides this, the materials and string forces?
It is, it's not at the level of detail of the courthouse. Um, it, it doesn't seem similar in any way. I understand the, the stone bands. Uh, I think there's a lot more three-dimensional detail at the courthouse. Uh, the roof is obviously a very different shape than than this German wooden building. So I, I just, I don't see necessarily the connection between this and and the courthouse, if the intention is that they want to
Uh, well, I don't think that the intention was to, was to replicate the courthouse.
No, I
I think it was to try to, you know, sort of complement it with materials and not put too much detail. I mean, the original proposal was almost no detail because we didn't want to draw attention to this courthouse. Um, and we felt that this was a sort of compromise between giving more of a nod to the courthouse versus having to be so ornate that it became a whole feature of the pond, just not at all with what the park commission wanted.
I think the challenge using challenges of contemporary materials and trying to relate it to a historic building is truly hard to get there. And you really need to pay attention to the finer grain of the details, so that I'm not sure I see that yet um, in what's being proposed, so.
Is there some, is it, would you prefer windows or recesses?
I prefer um, the, the study of, of the courthouse and the details and how this might relate to some of those details, either directly or or at least at a level of detail as so I don't see, I don't see any information here that says, here's what the courthouse details look like. Uh, this is why we are doing what we do. So I, you know, my point of view, just looking at this uh, as, as it being presented is there isn't nearly enough articulation in this building for it to stand next to the courthouse as a better complement. There's my
Okay.
Well, just, yeah, just one suggestion with that would be potentially having a low arch on the doorway that would eventually uh, reduce the push for the corners.
I I think, if I was the matter, um, my question to you. My question's really the bottom, just in theory on the sound. So when you're asking for the measurement of the sound, we're asking things to be insulated. You're measuring the sound outside of the building, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Total question I've been this. So I guess my, one of my questions would be, uh, is it our, is it our place to uh, speak to uh, how the structure, whether the structure matches, complements, or is it not here to the area? Is that part of our three months?
Question for me, but yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. I, I would say this is important context maybe for your question and your response to what I just heard about. Um, we, I appreciate where Bob is coming from. I do think that uh, the board definitely has a responsibility here to look at the context and to make sure that something is compatible here. Uh, that's where we get, you know, into the finer grain there and interpreting compatible is where we get into some debate. Uh, I do think irrespective of the particulars, it would be very helpful in the context of this application, the applicant, and any to provide a specificity, uh, while it is the applicant's responsibility to present something with the forms of the ordinance and uh, the guidelines that are expected there. Uh, you know, by reference, I do think it's important to be able to point to specifics that would be appropriate for inclusion, because in fact, professional committee asks. Uh, because otherwise we could have potentially a circular debate as to what is going to be acceptable, what will be compatible enough. So for instance, and I know I hope this word of the board here, uh, but if there's, for instance, if the suggestion is more detailed here, isn't the suggestion that, you know, wrong E-line that we're using some of the, you know, pattern of the detail in there? Is it window, you know, that, you know, is it the van, you know? I uh, again, I just think to facilitate entirely including everybody involved, and this is back to your question. I, I would suggest to try and provide both back and forth, as much specificity as possible, as opposed to just certain generically, the, the idea of a study between the different comparable buildings just surrounding them. Because I do think that's important, that's exactly what the ordinance is intended for. Uh, but for the board to not be able to specify something a little bit more clear what the direction should be in, that makes it hard for any applicant regardless of who it is. Uh, whether it's a city or a private, you know, entity of any type, uh, to know what will eventually be acceptable to the board.
Thank you. So and one of my other questions would be, uh, spoke to the orientation of the building and my question would be, uh, how did you go about choosing that orientation? And uh, is that the most practical that in terms of, you know, the piping and things of that nature?
It's certainly a straight shot for the pipe moved off to the house is necessary. So um, I think the original, you talking about when it's originally spun forty-five degrees. I think it was more to respond to that curve in the walkways that was facing both. Um, I'd rather personally like this orientation better. Um, so I think I would prefer that we keep it like this, but from a logistical standpoint of the piping, I heard one for.
I, I would just offer it again, I prefer the board your present from the office, respect to the office of planning development provided to you that because we're trying to design a project and we developed and orientation here is profitable to the one here is
Like, I have my hands. Um, I guess my questions are more in terms of process and where we are. So as I understand it, the um, the city council has to vote on this plan before we have funding to actually do any construction. And uh, so I'm, I'm just thinking about our timeline, getting in with everything, you know. Um, first, first is when you think that's going to end and, and will we make any mistake by taking action if the city council may not approve this plan because we, we just plan this, so it was evolved. Uh, that was the first question. The second question is uh, the, has to do with the historic commission, which has requested a review of the final design um, as part of this and um, still my, I guess my question would be, how do you see coming, coming back? Thinking about both of those things, what do you see about timing with respect to our, our future meetings?
So the city council, uh, I will say this, this project is at risk. It's, it's possible that the city council won't um, approve the release of the bond for this, so we are really hoping to have our permitting in order um, before we go to the city council. Um, they are now, we, we are, we are planning to go to bid on August first. The reason being, we want the bids back uh, in time for the second city council meeting, which is the second meeting in August, which I believe is the twenty eighth, but don't hold me on that. Um, so ideally, we would send this out to bid on August first with as much information about what it is that you're looking for, but as filling as possible. Um, and I would hope that you would give some deference to your cost due locations. This is not a residential project, this is a saving project that's being paid for the same money, city dollar, resident um, taxpayer dollars. So we do have to be somewhat um, you know, cautious of that in some regard. Um, we certainly are committed to doing brick and, you know, materials that um, are higher quality than wood or something, but um, obviously the margin channeling we put on is much, I mean, that's why we
So I'm not really sure I had a good answer to that because we've talked about coming back with some revisions to architecture and some answers on sound and we need to, you know, we'd want to. I think, you know, I haven't even opened up to public comment yet, but this is just from what I heard in the board members. Um, but is our next meeting?
Uh, we have a, we have a I don't think there's a reason we can't get a second. I do something, sound is second.
So that, so if you're trying to go out to bid on the first and you want to have city council approval for the plans of that thing.
Right.
And we don't have, you know, the first, the sooner should be able to come back with answers to the questions, but is the second. Just responded that, I guess, responded that.
Yeah, we, we would have to issue an addendum to the ditters. Uh, we need to put this out to the uh, August first. This is a smaller part of the grand project, so we need to put the rest of the documents out to bid and uh, you know, addendum division on the, on the, on the
And, and you're able to go out to bid before the city council?
They request, so, so they want to see that the bids are going to come in within the bond that was already approved. And so that's the purpose of doing the bid prior to the vote of the city council, so that we show them that we have bids that are going to follow in our budget.
And how does this stand with the conservation?
They approved it last week. Yeah, so we have NIFA DEP Conservation Commission, Parks Commission, um. Yeah, we've gone through, I think, by my last calendar night, my inventory agents, because they're all signed up. This is our last
Next one.
Next.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board members before the public hearing?
We just have one of our, this is not a long-term class, so if the bond covers the construction, then the initial setup long term, is this ultimately a city um, class or are there going to be grants that are going to be explored or? That's hardly the reason for the voting activity. Uh, there'll be, that'll be run with that half an hour of drawing revenue. I mean, the maintenance for this is going to be um, a little bit electricity. Uh, we have staff on DPS Parks Division that will be able to operate. It'll be all on and at the theaters, so it's unrelated to the courthouse in terms of
Correct.
Awesome, right?
If there are no more questions from board, uh, we'll open the public hearing. Um, is there anybody um, online or in the room who would like to speak to this application? Yes, please, boy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Nikic, ninety-three High Street. I uh, I really appreciate the level of uh, consideration and scrutiny that the city, all of its boards and commissions, um, and the administration's paid to this project because it it deserves it and it deserves to be done well. Um, so I, as a layperson, uh, I think that the um, option C building, it works for me. I am a layperson. Um, I think that simplicity is mighty key. Uh, and making sure that that building looks the way it should in the context of the courthouse, but doesn't become too detailed or um, bussing that it draws attention away from the courthouse. So if, if option C has, has uh, achieved that, I think it's, it's great. My big concern is that um, it bever, that there have been discussions of having a wood clad building out there, and I think that that would just, you know, wouldn't work at all. Um, so option C, that is a brick, thank you. Um, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, boy. Just name their mistakes.
Need to greenwood, I'm in one hundred and fifty-one High Street, which is the old Kenny's school sign, but to this, this structure. I also happen to be on the Parks Commission and many of the questions that you have asked so spent a long time deliberating over, particularly the sound level. As an avatar, I was particularly interested in the sound level. I feel very reassured by what the engineers told us at that particular meeting. Uh, I'm, I'm listening to um, their comments about the forty to fifty decibels, which is really about the conversation level, which is inside the building, not outside the building. So we were very reassured um, by uh, the information that they gave us. Similarly, uh, just as Stephanie just, just remarked, option C, while we can't replicate and nobody's asking us to replicate what the courthouse looks like. This is not for a bookshelf, she said, no, 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 that's, that's not going to cut it. We want something which does at least mimic the brickwork somewhere. And of course, be cost effective. So I really, um, the, the Parks Commission and myself, the avatar, feel very happy with option C as it was presented to us. Thank you.
And, and this is Mike Igo. Sorry if I, if I could uh, interject one more thing on the decibel level. Um, that comment is absolutely correct, and I think we re- reiterated that um, that the decibel level is inside the container, which is inside the building itself. I, and the one thing to remember too is that there will be white noise from the fountain being restored as it, as the uh, the fountain spray hits back on the water. So I fully expect that the white noise that's created from the fountain itself to drown out most, if not all, of any of the hum or the noise, whatever minimal noise that is that's emanating from the building itself. So there will be ambient white noise as a result of the fountain being restored that will cancel out some of the um, the low hum that may, may or may not be heard um, from two layers inside the building itself.
Are there any other, are there anywhere in the audience? Or anybody more in mind?
Glenn Richard?
Hi, uh, you hear me? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Glenn Richards, uh, Sixth Kent Street, and I think you know I'm also chair of the Historic Commission, so I'll just make one brief comment on the report as uh, you know, as far as the, like, from the commission, but then I just have comments just on my own, so I'll, I'll tell you when I switch gears there. Anyway, the only thing I wanted to say about the report is just by way of context, uh, we felt we should follow the ordinance, which is pretty clear as to what our mission is, and that's to provide the planning board with historical informations that they fully understand the context and the, and what it is they're dealing with in terms of, uh, in this case, it's not so much a structure as a landscape. And so we wanted, we, and that was a pretty strong feeling across the board. So that's what we did. Uh, we didn't feel as appropriate to try to get into, you know, de- design considerations and so on, nor is it our job to, you know, consider the engineering requirements. So, you know, it sounds like, um, you know, putting up a structure is going to be the ultimate way this goes. Okay, you know, we understand that that might be an eventuality. So, um, the, the as you, I hope you've read the report in there. It talks about the, you know, Elliot and his background and the whole the, the, the point is that mall, the Bartlett Mall is a gem, right? And so think of that analogy, you've got a gem. You might, you're going to cut it, so you got to be really careful. You can cut it and come up with something that's even better, or it could be a disaster. So I really appreciate the work that, that both the Parks Department and the uh, this board is doing. Uh, I really, obviously you listened um, to the, to the Historical Commission. I think some of the changes you've suggested. I think some of the changes you've suggested, source orientation and so forth are, are good. So, uh, that, I'm now, now I'm switching to my own personal opinions here. So I, I thought those were positive changes. And I thought Stephanie put it well. You know, the one comment I want to make on the design is simply this, that I would encourage you of everyone to not get too fixated on the courthouse. I mean, first of all, it's across the pond, it's, you're looking at its rear end, so to speak. And that was early nineteenth century, the park was set up late nineteenth century. And there were many local examples of like the Kelly School with eighteen seventy two, where you can kind of take your architectural cues as to, in, in any way, you don't want to mimic any of those or imitate them so much as just take visual cues and, you know, proportions and design ideas to, to make something. And I, my personal opinion is that the best way to complement the courthouse is to distract from it as little as possible. I agree with what Stephanie said on that. Keep it simple, don't make it too fancy because you don't want to call attention to this thing. And my, and my big thing, and I know I mentioned this in the, in the meeting too, is I, I went down there today, looked around. I'm convinced that you could easily push that building back a little bit into the, you know, toward the hillside without running into any fully grown trees or anything else. It looks, looks like there's plenty of room back there to just push it back. That would really take it away from the edge of the pond and really help a lot. Sorry if I went over. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Yes, okay, I've been having some garbled audio here, but if you can hear me, I, I, I'm Joe Morgan. I'm at fifty five Hill Street and I'm a member also of the Historic Commission. And I, I'd like to make a couple of comments on the, the details for the front pond improvements here, including the shed. Utility shed, I'm, I'm in opposition to, and I think that's for the reasons that we stated in the, in the advisory report. I, I, I believe it's an intrusive structure. It would be an intrusive structure on the historic landscape that Charles Elliott designed. Within that, the contours of that natural kettle pond, I believe there was a clear, a clear intent, a clear parti that he was trying to achieve along with the definition of the beach around the pond. Now, of course, we have a different situation now. We do have water management, we have a water level control via the, the pumping. We were trying to increase the quality of the water. So that, that technical, that technology is going to have to be accommodated. And I think it could be accommodated in a couple of different ways. One would be in a buried vault. I hear a lot of argumentation against the vault, but a couple of vaults for the pumps and pump controls, I think could very well achieve, achieve the solution that we're looking for. There may be added cost for, for, for that solution. I don't know, but I think it's well worth it to have it not visible on the landscape. The other one would be to relocate the utility shed, as it's called, up to the upper promenade along High Street. And there you could then talk about its compatibility stylistically with the streak scape and, and probably more relevantly, the courthouse. Uh, it could also become a kiosk to describe the history of the mall and also the history of the water management, uh, the evolution of the water management project. The second comment that I'd like to offer concerns the granite curbs that are to be installed around the perimeter. Those were presented to the Historical Commission and they were approved and they were supported by the Historical Commission. But I think it's very important within this, within, with the same argument made for the shed, that the, the granite curbs should be a subtle addition. They should not protrude from the beach definition that Charles Elliott designed. And in no way should they create any kind of a raised basin within the landscape. Uh, finally, I'd just like to say that it's my belief that the choice of a correct solution for these problems, these issues should not be made in haste, and I'm hearing that they are being made in haste due to the project schedule and, and to budgetary reasons. I think it would be, I think it's a responsible, long-term solution is required for the mall. And I think we'll be remembered on how we do respond and how we to the, and how we leave our mark on this very valuable landscape. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Joe. Patricia, thank you.
Hi, Patricia Pecknick for Dove Street. Given that the planning board is required to adhere to the Secretary of the Interior Standards and the guidelines, the National Park Service bulletin's in its review and in its decision, I'd like to point out just a couple of things in those documents. So the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Landscapes emphasizes that any new construction within the boundaries of an historic landscape must respect the formal arrangement of existing historic buildings on the site. So the mall was designed to be a refined landscape of civic buildings and a promenade, and we see a very dramatic relationship, a very intentional, dramatic relationship between all of the existing buildings, the courthouse and the jail, and as Mr. Richards mentioned, the Kelly School. I agree with Mr. Morgan that a concealed vault would not intrude into this setting, but that a utility shed at the edge of the pond will. I heard a member of the board question the aesthetic coherence between the courthouse and the design of the proposed shed. And I agree with those concerns. And I'll add that the National Park Service Bulletin titled The Treatment of Cultural Landscapes says that the architectural features of any new structure must be compatible with historic buildings on the site. Now, your audio went out quite often, including when photos were being shown of structures in Acadia National Park in Rockford, Maine, and I'm unclear what was being said about those structures, but most of them were very attractive and, and would suit the site. Standard nine of the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation requires design and materials compatibility on this site. Again, doesn't suggest, but requires, and I would urge you to send the final plans back to the Historical Commission for their review. And finally, I do appreciate that the pump is absolutely necessary to preserve and restore a key element of this historic landscape, which is the pond. But the preservation and restoration work mustn't be undertaken in a way that comprises, compromises the integrity of the whole landscape holistically. So I agree again with Mr. Morgan that a visually prominent vault is preferable to a visually prominent utility shed right there at the edge of the pond. And as a, as a resident of the city who has seen private property owners in the DOD held to the standards and the National Park Service guidelines, despite high structural costs or construction sequencing, I truly hope the city will hold itself to those same standards in its own projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else who wishes to be heard at this point. I will release the public comment period for this and bring it back to the board. Any discussion about how you would like to proceed?
Yeah, I just, just a few comments. And then as far as my opinion, I, I do think the orientation of the building is preferable, is what it might seem. I like the idea of complimenting courthouse. I think it should remain fairly simple to not just it's so obvious, but I think it's true not to compliment the courthouse.
There's one, one observation relative to the presentation and some of the comments. When, when you show precedent, they stand. Those, those are all wonderful landscape elements and follies in terms of their architecture. And certainly not meant to disappear. They, they, they've all held up as, as unique statements in the landscape. They go in detail with a level equivalent to, to other buildings in the surrounding area. So I, I, I thought the examples that you provided were terrific. But, but then I heard, let's not call attention to this thing at the edge of the pond. And I think that's very contrary to the kind of examples that you showed. Let's say twelve by twelve building. It doesn't compete with the courthouse, particularly in terms of scale or presence on the site, but it does deserve to have a level of articulation that, that respects the level of quality represented by the building. What, what exists now is a relative slab building, contemporary materials. And, and honestly, I don't think it will stand up as, as equivalent in, in quality to the courthouse and doesn't really stand up to a city, those, in terms of, of this structure. So I, I think number one, we, we've got to decide whether this is a building that presents in the site. I think it does. Uh, if you're not to make this an underground ball, uh, and it's an underground visible structure, then it deserves the kind of detail that you showed in precedent. Using the temporary materials, more, more effort than we made to travel, elevate the level with detail to something that's similar to quality. Without mimicking that, but paying attention to the kind of detail that they're over there.
I was thinking something similar to that. I do like the zebra structure, and I do see that you tried to add some details, but I do think a few more details from the courthouse would actually make this look more pleasing. And it would look more intentional. I, I really liked the examples which you showed, and I think that those had more detailing in regards to this being relocated as in. I think that the public is, is forgiving of these types of things when they understand how necessary it is to the overall pond and the health and the safety of, you know, people who enjoy this pond. So I don't think that being underground is necessary. And I think here that I feel like more problems would arise by trying to hide this underground. I think keeping it accessible and just having it tasteful, I think it was one of the best look and functionality.
Yes.
So I just had one observation to offer that with the option B, the vault option, concern would be for actually it being much more conspicuous because one would presume the, or is it B? No, which was the vault option that was earlier? It was cut into the hill.
Yeah, you could keep going, there's one more before that. Yeah, that one.
Yeah, there we go. It's going to be much more conspicuous because you're going to need a fence around it so that from a safety standpoint on all three sides. And I would think that the spirit of a pump house is quite in keeping with these ponds and part of a necessary utility to it. It's also a teachable moment as well. And I think the detailing of what's been proposed is in accord with what of the pond would dictate and also in reference to the courthouse. So I think the other observations made by the other planning board members are in keeping with the spirit of what the pump house would do. The vault would also be prohibitively expensive and from a maintenance standpoint, might be even more problematic, given the amount of retaining that it would have to adhere to.
Thank you. So I think we really have two options before us now. Uh, you need a motion, and the motion could be to grant approval of a special permit, in which case we would need to additions at this point, or to continue to the August second meeting and ask the, the advocate to come back to respond to some of the questions about design, design refinements, nor is, I'm not sure there's anything else that's on this at this point, but I guess cited, cited as an issue whether it could be moved back. So I'm open to a motion.
Not to rush this, like, like, I think Joe Morgan said, like, not, you know, we can't rush this just because they are sort of under the gun. But it does for clarity, if we did put it on to the August second meeting, just what does that do to, to their city council? Do they still go forward to the council meeting for the clause that they're also going back to us about?
So my understanding is the city council meeting is after the second.
Oh, no, it's before, it's the twenty eighth of August. Oh, of August. So it's just your. It's a matter of putting, we're, we're planning to put this out to bid on August first so that we have ample time to, to publish it, to get bids back in time with the city council meeting. But some of these requests, I don't think, I link to her points, she think would be addendums to her bids, because we're not asking for like relocation and completely materials, we're just fine tuning. If we went that route.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's, it's, the city council meeting is both to approve the plan and to approve the file. But it's, it's not just.
It's one and the same. It was a condition of, of your, of your plan, so it's, it's the same thing.
So they would, they would need to see results of our.
But that's per me that on August second, sorry. We're not, if they came back on August second, it wouldn't affect their opportunity to start with this because what we're looking asking for is the lack of nature. And it could be an addendum that they could then issue out to those bids if that was what we wanted. Awesome.
So when a roll call, oh.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I will vote yes. And although this is not a I'm not sure what we should do right now, this is not the special permit. Uh, yeah, it was, I guess you should vote on it too.
Yeah, this is the special. Yeah.
I will ask you to vote.
I'm asking to vote on this, it's not as, something that is the final vote.
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess, just to point this out, we don't know who will be attending August second, but we need to have.
Ideally, all members would be there.
Yes, but people are people can review the, the notice.
Correct. Review the tape and we were, well, the office was usual and we talked about this regarding who so, so they can participate at the next meeting. Uh, yeah, thank you.
So I mean, it's just, it's a little bit complicated, just wanted to clarify this for you. So if all of us were, all of the regular members were eligible to vote.
Correct, you would, you would not. I understand.
If, if all of the people who are not absent are eligible, one of these people is not present, then you would, but so it's just. Is that, oh, you may not be here this night? So you're very likely to be.
Okay. I'll do, I can do a B S.
I can try if you isn't.
No, we'll work it out.
And that would be great, and just thank you for all the, uh, the interaction. Would be great. Uh, that's, as the chair illustrated, one great reason why any members were able to approve this one meeting. That's why I think that we have a little bit of a difference, yeah. Another key here is why that's so good.
Thank you, thanks.
Can I just ask one question? I'm just, I'm unclear as to what, if I can get a little bit more information about exactly what it is. I don't want to come back on the second, say, well, we don't like that detail, so I'm just like.
I don't want to come back on the second, say, well, we don't like that detail, so obviously like.
I think I think the best thing would be to uh have an Asian meeting with Andy. Uh, and maybe get one or two board members to sit down and make that meeting, just to have some more specificity. Um, because I understand we've got a lot of different, um, you've had a lot of different information from me.
Exactly.
But I certainly I'm bothered by that, uh, and just to be able to say, I'm excited, I'm excited trying to do it. From the fly, what is the kind of changes that might be, you know, the direction we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is uh the application to Douglas Duchesne. With thirty seven representing twenty-three, twenty-seven State Street for a special permit for non-tenant.
Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Uh, for the record, Douglas Duchesne, I do have a presentation. Uh, but I also brought you some hard copies of the presentation and more importantly, I raised some hard copies of the plans. Because the plans, quite frankly, didn't, they don't seem to show well enough for me. But I did, I did bring you some eleven by seventeen, so you could see the details of, if it is a little, thank you, little fuzzy up there. Thank you very much. Um. Um, if I could, if you would, the next slide. Uh, again, Douglas Duchesne with veteran and Nicholson representing the applicant owner Scott Hopey, who is here with the uh this evening. Uh, along with his wife Christina, uh, and Aileen, our Aileen Graff was our architect. Uh, uh, he provided the floor plan for us this evening, so I wanted to mention of that. Um, if you'd like to go to the next slide, please. So as I assume was stated in the reading of the uh the meeting. Um, we are seeking a special permit for non-conformities. Uh, to allow the conversion of two existing office units within the building at twenty-three, twenty-seven State Street uh to two residential units. Uh, with respect to the existing conditions, the exist existing three-story commercial property and the lot itself are located in the business two district, zoning district, and in the downtown overlay district. Both the lot and the building are pre-existing non-conforming. Uh, the lot is not conforming as to the lot area and uh and is uh non-conforming as to frontage. But does appear to be conforming in all other aspects. Uh, currently, the building is a mixed-use building with a restaurant located on the first floor. Uh, and office spaces on the second and third floor above. Um, the residential units I will um uh mention are allowed. Uh, as by the zoning administrator, the current use as a mixed-use building is actually a pre-existing non-conforming use. Because it's been in existence since prior to when you needed a special permit for a mixed-use building. So technically, it's allowed use by special permit, but because this building has existed as a mixed-use building before that requirement, it's considered pre-existing non-conforming, which is why we are here for the special permit. Otherwise, it would have just been a change of one allow use uh to another. Uh, also, the existing office units, the two that we're talking about, are pre-existing non-conforming as to parking requirements. Under the parking dump bylaws, zoning ordinances, excuse me. Um, those offices are required to have five total parking spaces. However, there are none. Um, I don't know if there are any dedicated parking spaces for any of that building. In fact, I know there are no. Uh, however, the proposed change of use uh to the to the residential use actually requires less parking. So I guess in a way, we're reducing the non-conformity as to parking. So Jennifer did determine that there was no need to uh provide additional parking as we are pre-existing and actually reducing the non-conformity. Um, the next slide, please. Uh, thank you. This is just the zoning matrix to show you that, you know, with respect to lot size, um, frontage, and again, parking. We are currently existing as pre-existing non-conforming and uh, and just to show you that. Um, if we could go to the next plan, and and this is, again, I feel this was a little hard to read, so I gave you a a hard copy so you could see it more clearly. Uh, this is actually the uh site plan, if you will, for the condominium. When it when it was made into a condominium, this was the site plan that was done. This is a recorded plan at the registry of deeds. And as you can see, with the exception of the the area to the top of the picture where those stairways shown, and there's a couple buildings are structures uh labeled as freezers. Um, that is the only portion of the lot that is not covered by building. Everything else from that stairway, if you will, forward is the building itself. It goes lot line to lot line, street line to there. We do have a twenty-foot rear yard setback. Um, that's the location of those uh those freezer buildings that are associated with the restaurant. But uh, uh, as you know, in that downtown district, uh, you know, there is no lot uh coverage requirements or a setback requirement. So other than the size itself, in the frontage, we do meet zoning with respect to uh the setbacks. So um, next slide, thank you so much. Um, the project summary is hoping is hoping uh to change the use of his third floor condominium spaces, which are currently two office spaces, uh, and he wants to convert those to two residential dwellings. Each dwelling will have one bedroom. That's where we get our four parking space requirements to do for them. Uh, again, residential use is allowed in a mixed-use building. So. There's a, however, as I said previously, because the current use is considered pre-existing non-conforming. We were directed by the zoning administrator to seek a special permit under section nine B two B for this change of use. Um, the next slide is uh actually the uh, the floor plan is done by Aileen Graff for us. And what they show you on the left side, and I did give you a big, you can see on the left side, we have two existing office units. Uh, one does have a small kitchen area and a bathroom. The other is uh pretty much a larger uh uh office space with a hall and a small water closet there in the back. And then on the right side of the plan, you can see what we're proposing to do. And that is to essentially convert the office space on the left-hand unit to a living sleeping area. So it will, in some senses, be like a um, a studio style, but we are considering in a one-bedroom. The unit to the right, as you can see, we're proposing a new bath, a small kitchen area. And then the area to the back will be the front, the bedroom, and the front area will be a small living area. So all of the work to be done here is solving. Any exterior changes whatsoever, which is why we're not before you under the D O D regulations. This is all internal, will have zero impact on the appearance of the building or any changes at all. There'll be no changes at all to any of the exterior stairways and and area. So uh, everything will be done within the building. Slide, please. Thank you very much. Um, so we are seeking a special permit for non-conformity, so I certainly feel I have to go through the criteria with you. Um, as I said, the existing use is two office suites within a mixed-use building. We're proposing to convert them to two residential units, one bedroom each, within that same building. Um, presently, a special permit is required for a mixed-use building. However, the use of twenty-three, twenty-seven Straight Street as a mixed-use building predates that requirement. And so it is considered pre-existing non-conforming as to that requirement. The proposed change in use will not change or intensify the existing non-conformities in any way. Uh, and in fact, we are not proposing to create any new conformities. I would suggest, if anything, with the reduction in the parking requirement, we, you know, are slightly improving in our conformity. If that's a way to look at it, but uh technically, we're just not affecting or creating any new non-conformities. And then lastly, identifying the facts that I relied upon to support this permit. Um. The current, the applicant is proposing to change a use, which isn't allowed use in a mixed-use building, to a different use, which is also allowed in a mixed-use building. The proposed residential use can be deemed to actually be less intensive than an office use. And as I said, requires less parking. Therefore, the proposed change in use will likely be less detrimental overall. Um, and certainly not more detrimental. Um, and quite honestly, this change in use will provide, you know, some much-needed residential opportunities in our downtown district, which we know are so important. Um, and certainly not of our character with our surrounding buildings, right? A lot of them are businesses on the bottom and residential on the top. So I think we are truly keeping in character uh with the neighborhood and uh, and again, will have no uh detrimental impact. So in summary, uh, the current use uh is a mixed-use building. Uh, my client is hoping to convert those two offices into residential uses, which are allowed in a mixed-use building. We do require a special permit from this board. The proposed change will not result in any changes to the exterior of the building. All work done internal to the existing units. Proposed use residential is less intrusive and requires less parking than the current use. So the proposed change in use will not change or intensify any of the existing non-conformities that are creating nuance. And lastly, the proposed use will not be significantly more detrimental um to the surrounding area. So with that, thank you for uh listening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and. Here as well, if uh there's a question that I can't um answer, although I doubt that. Lastly, and I do apologize, but we did get um a notice from the the D P W with respect to street trees and sidewalks. And although I do not believe there was call for any additional street trees in that area, if you're familiar with it, there's really not a roof of trees. Uh, there was an indication that there may be um a requirement or an opportunity for my client to participate in some repair work. And we obviously are amenable to that. Only helps our building and our residents. So with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, um, for the complete presentation. Uh, would there have any questions?
Good morning. Thank you, Ben. Uh, this is probably an obvious question. So it looks like we know, confirming there's no structural changes inside of a uh non-structural wall and a new bathroom.
Yeah, I I I I understand that it'll just really biting off that bathroom and putting in the associated plumbing and electrical, but no major structural barrier walls that would be touched.
And and also are windows being replaced or?
I don't believe we are proposing at this time to change any windows at all. Again, no exterior impacts. Uh, if that ever comes to play, we'll be dealing with the D O D regulations. But now this will be uh unseen from any.
Thank you. Just one question, it looks like from the uh the current use, the existing use, the uh, there is an exit in the back and both office spaces have access to that exit.
Yeah, there'll be a apartment that come away and both of those units will have, continue to have access for firing dress purposes, yes.
So if they they will both have access in the in the.
Yes.
Okay, because it didn't look, didn't look that way to me on the plan, so.
You know, we we have, we have to have, we have to have, uh, as you know, we're required by law to have a second means of degress for both units, yes. But it will be shared for that, for the secondary. Or technically so will the stairs, right? Uh, the internal.
So there's the internal stairs and then, but the other unit would have access to that.
Yes. I I I I guess I do have, you know, with me. Uh, but I do know that she would design, had to design this to meet the uh residential degress and access requirements.
So it looks like to me there's the hallway going back to the bedroom and that is in the. One of them is, or or is that available?
Just a whole.
There is, thank you. So the current third floor egress that both units have through uh the hallway there will then be internal to the unit on the right side of the plan. But when the architect reviewed this. That was uh to be here. It's a second form of regress at the front of the building, the whole time. So uh, the the unit on the right side has an internal egress out the back. Uh, and the unit on the left-hand side can go out down a half a flight of stairs out the back or out the front of the building. Which, you know, the stairs wind down to the second floor and out the front of the building to get the two restaurants.
And I guess, just to be clear, because I wasn't clear. There are currently exterior rear exits for both offices. And that will continue, that will not change. That makes sense. So there there's actually two rear exits, one at the third floor and one at the second floor.
Great. I only I only see one indicator on the plan.
So so as I understand it, what you're saying is that the um, the unit on the left has two exits. One is half a flight of stairs down.
Out the back.
Um, so it's between the second and third floors, and the other is going all the way down. And because it's only half a flight down, it meets the separation requirements, there are two exits. It doesn't show, you have to look at that. This this plan to see and look at the second, second floor units. It is, it doesn't, it doesn't appear, i- if you just look at it only for the third floor, it does look like it's all contained in the second year.
Yeah, it was clear. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Hey, um, any other questions? And just so everybody's fair on this, the only reason we're looking at this rather than the zoning board is that it's in the D O D. Normally, for application with this, the zoning board will look at, but we are the special program. Okay, uh, I will open up with any comments or questions from members of the public about this application. Antonette, um, would you like to address the board?
Hi, uh, my name is Antonette Giuliano. I'm the owner of twenty-seven State Street. I first want to say that I fully support the project of twenty-three State Street being converted to residential. Um, I think that would be good for the building in general. And Attorney Duchesne has been wonderful in sending me information about the project. I just had a clarification. Um, a- and I wanted to give you a little bit of history. So this building became condos about a year and three months ago. And the entity that conveyed my unit to me is called twenty-three dash twenty-seven State Street LLC. Um, and and so my my company now owns twenty-seven State Street. So the work being proposed here is actually for twenty-three State Street, despite the fact that there's twenty-three dash twenty-seven State Street. So I just want a clarification that this does not affect the zoning for my condo. Um, and it won't disrupt uh my tenant in any way.
Uh, this is the important, the director of playing development. I guess I can say that the sub result of that is that, no, there would no, not be any adverse effect here. Um, I think I understand in, you know, your concern about the address reference, I think that might be in part because uh applicants are typically referenced in the addresses, uh, showing in the existing database, including the accessory database. So, um, yeah, I think your point is just well made here. I don't think about how many subjects have been back, but the, you know, the concern that you're raising here. Um, but I think uh, reason in part why the address, I'll defer the attorney here, but part of the reason why the address might be referenced that way in this application is just to conform to when the accessory maps are uh assigning addresses, uh, and those are unfortunately sometimes lagging behind. There's an update that I had some of those assignments, so it might be just because of that.
So just for clarification, and that's here. Um, is this a lot that is twenty-three to twenty-seven State? And we're talking about the condominium units on the twenty-three portion of it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we have, because we have, because we have to reference the lot, the lot.
Correct.
Have to reference, right? But it'd be good, I think, in, in.
We could have written the decision back.
Been written the decision to say it only applies to twenty-three.
Yes, okay, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about this? If not, I will close the public hearing, public content, and um, I would look for a motion. On the board of this special permission.
I'm, I'm willing to approve the special permit.
Okay, I will, um, hold the vote, hold it.
Yes. Yeah.
Heather.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
I vote yes and sure.
Yes. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for the detailed presentation.
Well, I'm sorry for the confusion on the accent.
Okay. Our final public hearing of the evening is. Uh, for seventy-eight State Street, E E Enterprises doing business as banter. Uh, requesting two special permits, a special permit for non-conformities, and a special permit for you.
Rip, before we start.
Yeah, oh, yes, thank you.
Uh, Charles Bonizano, I will have to refuse myself on voting on this matter. That's maybe a potential.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, releasing me to have a possible thirty-three Green Street in your report. And with me this evening, um, is Eric Romo, who is the owner of Banter, Eric's right here. Um, and we're here for two permits, a special permit for non-conformities, which I'll talk about in a minute. And a special permit for use. And again, as with the last petition. Um, even though we're not doing any external changes, uh, this is in the DOD in pursuit of the ordinance. Uh, the planning board is the special permit granting authority for all projects to the DOD. So the space in question is part of the property located at seventy to eighty State Street. Uh, for those of you um who may know, that's fondly referred to as the Orion Building. Uh, and this is a storefront on the first floor of the Orion Building. Uh, this storefront includes one thousand five hundred ninety-five square feet of area. Uh, the proposal is to uh permit an entertainment club use four oh seven, just before everybody gets excited about that. We're really looking at the club part of the entertainment club um use, not the entertainment use, but they're together. Um, and it allows for membership events essentially. Um, in your facility, and it also then allows for the applicant to go to the licensing commission as well. So we'll talk about that as we go through here, but I did want to make that clear upfront, that we're really more focused on the club use. But the name of the use in the ordinance is entertainment club. Um, there is going to be, the other reason we're here for a special permit for non-conformities is we are making. An alteration on the interior of the building, um, which a small alteration, which we'll talk about in a minute. So the current use on the existing floor are all retail uses. Um, and retail trade uses, the upper floors contain professional social service uses. All of which are permitted by right, both the first floor uses and the upper floor uses are all permitted by right. However, uh, because the different uses are on different levels. Uh, due to a change a few years ago in the definition of mixed use, the city classifies the entire building as a mixed-use building. Um, the entire parcel itself is fifteen thousand five hundred thirty-seven square feet of area. And ha- is in located in the B two zoning district and has a hundred and seven feet of frontage on State Street. Um, and therefore it is a conforming lot all around. Um, it meets all of the setback requirements, which are complete uh coverage line to line. As well as, um, it has non-conforming parking that's located in the rear of the building. The building, the property itself is actually made up of two parcels. And a significant portion of the second parcel, which we'll show in a minute, is located in the rear of the building, and there is parking in the rear of the building. The building itself was built in eighteen seventy, the newer portion of the building is built around nineteen sixty. Uh, the structure itself, um, includes twenty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six square feet of area. The rear of the structure on the second parcel is like in, included in, indicated includes parking. We can do it in the next slide. Um, so as I said, in the minimum, the minimum size of a lot in the B two is five thousand square feet. Sixty feet of frontage, five of that, and all other dimensional requirements. So the proposal is to add the entertainment club use to this first floor, um, storefront. Um, it requires a special permit from this board. As I said before, there will be no alterations to the exterior of the building, except for the interior alterations. Currently, um, there will be no impact on parking because there's no increased square footage. Nor is there any increase in the number of chairs um in the building uh for the use, which is now um a barbershop with retail. Associated. To be clear, um, just so you know, the definition of entertainment club under the ordinance. Is an enclosed facility for entertainment, which includes a membership club or lodge or video arcade games. Here, the applicant is offering memberships to its patrons. Um, which is a more sophisticated barber shop, if you will. Um, which will allow a rewards program to be put in place. It offers certain discounts, um, to specialized services, early access to events, which I'll tell you what they are in a minute. Um, and the change will allow the applicant to obtain a liquor license to be able to offer alcohol also to its patrons. Uh, the events are things like um early retail sales, so they have very specialized. Uh, clothing and other accessories in the store for sale, so they would be offering, um. Uh, pre-retail sales, trunk sales, and things like that, only to their members as opposed to the general public. So that's the kind of event idea, we're not really talking about entertainment here. The interior alterations, um, and I'm going to show you those in a minute on the plan, are merely. There's an existing hallway in the bathroom that has to be reconfigured to make the bathroom be handicap accessible. So I'm going to show you that. And the hours of operation are currently ten to six Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Thursday, eight to six, Saturday, nine to five, and Sunday, eleven to five. There's no proposed change to those hours. It's all the same. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here's the floor plan. On the right of the, of this slide is State Street. So you walk into the, um, to the store. And you see there's some sitting areas, there's a, uh, an area where the cashier is. Then you've got some retail areas, um, with shelving. And you have a pool table, um, at the back of that front area. Many of you may have recalled when Banter opened. That this was, you know, a new idea in offering services, um, to folks who wanted to use the barber shop. Um, a more relaxed atmosphere, kind of a destination place. Um, and then you see the chairs, the club chairs that sit around there. Then you pass through, um, some more retail. Um, area, a- and you see the four barber chairs. And that, all of this exists today, and that's not changing. Um, as you go towards the back, you see, um, on the left-hand side or the bottom of the slide. You'll see the bathroom area with the circle. That's the revised handicap bathroom. And this, and that hallway is now wider than that whole area to receive, um, and, and hold the handicap bathroom. Then as you go to the rear, you have an employee office space and an employee break area. So the only change and alteration to the interior of this is to accommodate the handicap bathroom and then, um, reconfigure the changing room. There's no other changes with regard to the interior of the building from now. So if you were to issue this permit. Uh, next slide, please. And then just to give you an idea, um, this is the Orion Building, this is Upper State Street. Um, you can see that, um, it's located, um, between, um, obviously between Pleasant Street and Prince Place. Uh, next slide, please. So here's a view, um, down, uh, south on State Street. Uh, Banter is right next to, um, Life is Good. Um, so you can kind of check, see where that is on the, on the plane. You can see, if you look closely, we're gonna have one of these, you see a barber shop. Um, Princeville, probably named that, or, or, out front. Next slide, please. Um, and so here is another shot from the building. And the next slide, please. And again, you can see another shot. So to the left of Life is Good, you can see the entrance to, um, Banter. And next slide, please. And then this is looking north on State Street in the opposite direction, um, Port Tavern on the left-hand side. And none of this is changing, I just need to give you context. Next slide, please. So as I said, we need two permits, uh, one, special permit for use. Um, which I'll go through first, and then the second is a special permit for non-conformities. So the special permit for use has, um, I believe nine criteria. The first is, is that the requested use is listed in the table of uses, and in this instance, it is, it requires special permit in the B two seven district. Uh, the next is that the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience and welfare. Here, the use of entertainment club is allowed by special permit in B two, and therefore the city council and hopefully the planning board. Has by its very nature determined it to be desirable. Uh, the use is in the downtown area, uh, it will help the vibrancy of Upper State Street and help solidify this new and successful business. Over the past several years, the new owners of the Orion Building have worked very hard to reinvigorate Upper State Street, Upper State Street. And enliven the first floor of this building. Reflecting vitally, I might say, on quality of, um, businesses in that building. The applicant is part of that plan, uh, and the business day has been successful. However, as any good entrepreneur would do, Mr. Romo is looking to provide his services in a slightly more unique manner. And because the new use does not resolve in any new occupancy for the premises, rather an additional and different way to provide this unique service to his customers. The proposal has little impact on the area. That cornerstone of an active, attractive, and successful business is essential and desirable to the convenience and welfare and the vibrancy of the downtown of the B two district. Um, I would also point out that in the two thousand seventeen master plan. Um, it included recognition of the need to encourage new ways to be competitive. Specifically, the master plan included the following economic development goals, among others. Um, goal, ED five, to become more friendly to businesses by eliminating unnecessarily or overly restrictive regulatory constraints. And ED six, to ensure that the supply and character of commercial space can adapt to a changing environment. And I think that was, that's what Sir Romo was trying to do here, is to make sure he stays ahead of the game as he opens, as he's opened this new business. Um, the third, uh, the third criteria is the requested use for, um, creating undue traffic congestion. Or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Here, the new use and location will not create any undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. There's obviously plenty of sidewalks on, um, State Street. Uh, as I noted earlier, the occupancy of the building is not changing, there's no new tables, no new chairs. Uh, rather, the interior construction or reconstruction is for handicap access bathroom. Um, and really, the club use really just complements the existing use that exists in the building today. Um, item four, a criteria four is that the proposed use will not overload, uh, public water or any other system. And here, there's not going to be any impact because of the club use on water or sewer, certainly no impact on si- on a stormwater system. The fifth criteria is that any, is, are there any special regulations for these use? And the answer is no, there are no special regulations in the ordinance. The sixth criteria is that the requested use will not impair the district or be detrimental to health and welfare. And here, the addition of entertainment club at this location for this purpose is consistent with B two district. And certainly is additional, will impair the integrity or character of the district or enjoying this place. Uh, the seventh criteria, thank you, um, is useful not by its addition to the neighborhood, plus an excess of that use. Here, there are no other entertainment club uses immediately in the downtown, other than the doll club, of course, further south on State Street, on the opposite side. Beyond the institutional savings. However, um, that use is significantly different than what's being proposed here. So there are no other businesses in downtown that offer the same kind of proposed.
Keep going.
Okay, um, membership use, uh, for various customers of existing services. Uh, therefore, there won't be any excess use in the neighborhood. And the eighth is that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Here, the downtown business is the most appropriate place in the city for such a use. Um, the proposed, the purpose of the B two district is described as follows. It includes retail, service, and office uses. The scale is intended to reinforce. The downtown's role as the focus of activity in the report. Multi-use development is encouraged. Such as the combining of residential business uses, activities such as, um, shall be oriented to pedestrian traffic and. And have centralized parking. All of those are true here, um, to reinforce the downtown's role. The focus of activity in the report encourages people to be creative with how they provide business and services. Uh, to the city of the report. And so that criteria is also met. And finally, that the proposed use won't essentially harm or be nauseous. Um, to the neighborhood, and this will not be, uh, there's no nauseous, dangerous, um, services that are going to be provided here. So with that, we believe we need the special permit criteria for the use. Uh, the other criteria, uh, excuse me, the other permit is a special permit for non-conformities. Um, and that, of course, is because we're modifying the in, interior of the building. Um, and there are two criteria under the ordinance, under ninety-two B, and that is first, that there will be no intensification or extension. Um, an existing non-conformity or addition of new non-conformity here. Um, there, the board combined that the alterations, the building will not be. Um, adding any new non-conformities at all. In fact, um, all of the uses that exist there are by right. Um, except for the mixed-use section, and then, um, we're asking for the special permit for the use. So we, we're not extending any existing non-conformities, and the building itself is dimensionally conforming itself. Um, then the second criteria is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the existing non-conforming structure for use. Um, and here, we believe that, um, as I stated with all the criteria above. Um, that we're not adding, not adding any additional occupancy for the property. Uh, and it's merely an added service for the existing customers that go into the, um, into the service or business now. Um, and we certainly propose that, uh, the modifications, uh, we believe that based on everything I've said. The proposed modifications don't rise to the level of being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Given that substantially means to a greater or significant extent. Here, certainly what we're proposing, um, doesn't rise to that criteria. Um, and I think the board can find that what's being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, I just also want to add here that, um, we provided eight letters of support, uh, for the project. For the change of use, um, eighty-eight State Street, which is Lexi, and seventy-eight State Street, which is Light is Good. Seventy-two State Street, which is Charleston and Coco, seventy-six State Street, which is Virtue Jewelers. Seven Prince Place, unit five oh two, that's a residential unit in the back and top, eighty-four State Street. Two Prince Place, which is actually a residential butter, that's K D I, I live right around on. States, um, Prince Place, right behind the library. Um, and I do want to point out that eighty-two State Street, which is the, um, screening room. Sent in a letter, an email earlier on July sixth that said they were concerned about what was being proposed. Uh, they came over and, uh, well, Eric went over there today, uh, and then they came over. Um, and they met, and they actually submitted a letter of support. Um, they didn't understand the entertainment club, because they got the notice, and it says entertainment club, and so they didn't really understand. The details of what was happening. So they did send a letter of support today, um, and you have that in your file too. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions from the requested board and to approve our requests.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna start off with a couple of questions. Uh, first, I guess, one question perhaps for Andy, more than for the applicant. Uh, this question of the special permit for non-conformities. You were discussing the interior modifications, is that that was the reason? Normally, you can do interior modifications without a special permit. Is there something specific about using interior modifications?
I had, I want to say, it's really back in the definition of the use itself, this sort of this component being added that. Um, again, I was just, a bathroom being. Yeah, again, it's, it's the activity of the use in here that's taking place, that's. Yeah, again, it's, it's the activity of the use in here that's taking place, that's a slight, you know, addition or creating, you know, addition to what you might otherwise. You know, it's typical barber shop of just, you know, the, the service. Um, it's not, it doesn't pretty obvious, I mean, trying to, you know, create a particular concern, we suggest to bend these ground conditions to, you know, to make it clear what is being proposed. Right, but as far as the, uh, if you're asking about whether the construction.
Why is this a non, why are we hearing non-conformities? Because is this, it's not, it's not the bathroom itself, is it?
Right.
I'll, I'll let you know, I'll tell you what, if I could, um, I'll tell you what Jennifer's, I argued with Jennifer a lot about this. Jennifer's determination was that because the building is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Because she says that the mixed use, because it's different kinds of commercial enterprises. Makes it pre-existing non-conforming use. And because we're altering the pre-existing non-conforming use. And adding a new use, even though it's allowed by special permit, she believes this is an alteration of pre-existing non-conformity.
I guess my, my question is, try to figure this out. If the applicant had come and just wanted to do the bathroom. And, and just, would they have, and then, then came, you know, six months later to do the use, they wouldn't have needed a special permit for that.
I think Jennifer would say we would, because she, because she considers the building to be non-conforming.
So when you mentioned earlier about getting rid of obstacles to development in the zone.
So I, I have to say, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I couldn't agree more. And the city. You know, I actually argued a little bit about the definition of mixed use of Jennifer, because. Um, I frankly, uh, missed the change of your definition of mixed use. Which eliminated, so. When I, when I changed, when I did the definition of mixed use in the early nineties, when I was on city council. We said mixed use was first floor commercial. And at some level, the upper floors had to be residential, and that was mixed use, right? So residential, commercial. In fact, if you look at. Chapter forty A, section, uh, uh, two now, the definitions, that's how they define mixed use in forty eight. But the city a few years ago changed the definition of mixed use to basically be. Frankly, not clear, but basically be any combination of uses in a building.
Not necessarily requiring residential.
Correct. Right. And so, in fact, that's why I dropped it in.
So you're in the downtown, you're mixed use.
Right, so that's why I dropped it in a footnote, because I think frankly the definition is crazy. So anyway, so that's why we.
Thank you for that one. I, um, I. So in terms of the, um, the substance of the use application.
Yes.
Um. You're, you said you're not gonna, you're not requesting entertainment.
Well, it, the, the definition is.
But what you're proposing doesn't include.
Yeah, no.
And, and this is all proposed to be interior to the existing building.
That's correct. Now, I will say, I'm, I'm gonna just put it out there. Um, last year, there was a, an annual birthday party, uh, of the business. It was held in the rear parking lot. But they had to get a one-day license, an entertainment license from the licensing commission in order to do that. So, um, this has nothing to do with that.
That would be, that would be part of the use.
Any, right, no, exactly, exactly.
The other, uh, questions are, put them out.
So, one question, and I wish you stated the existing hours, and said they don't intend those to change.
Right.
Right? So if the special permit was granted and they started serving liquor. Can they, and I'm asking anybody, I don't know, can they, just over the danger of building your business, change their hours after the bath? Like, are you just saying that's a general statement, or is that a commitment?
So, no, I, I wanted to make sure everybody knew what the hours were, and that there's no intention of changing them. When they go to the liquor commission, licensing board. They will have hours of operation. And so if those are different from what's here, they'd go back to licensing commission to change those hours.
Or say like in a year, if this is a successful model, like if you want like Friday nights, they would have to go back for permission for that.
They would, the license, because the license, when you get your liquor license, it has hours on it. And if you're gonna change it, you have to go back to them.
I'm just very sorry.
Okay, just one question for clarification maybe between. Red or, I mean, when the, the addition of the, uh, additional, the use, for the seven applies only to this portion of the building?
Yes.
Correct, right.
Just, just this space. That's why we're very clear in our application, that's just the space.
Right, that was one of the things that the office, we talked about it, Jennifer, and, uh, you know, and I thought it was maybe clear and helpful. Well, you know, the board here for the occupant may declare, this is only this portion of the, the building or space is being referred to in this application. Right. Uh, partly, you know, in the context of, you know, a worker structure of other floors and so forth. Um, and recognizing that other permits that pass have been granted by the, or by the sort of board feels principles and changes like this. We just thought it was very clear, it was worth to make it clear what is being referred to, and that's why we suggest also just clarifying that.
Yeah, it's only this space, that's why I made sure I gave you the size of this space as opposed to the overall.
Richard, do you have any questions?
Nope, I have no questions.
Okay, um, open it up for public comment. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak to? And we have somebody online, I'm sure. Uh, name and address, please.
Thank you. I'm Dark Cat from Grand A, uh, my wife and I own eighty two State Street. Where the screening room is located. Um. We are quite concerned because. There's a lengthy common wall between eighty two State Street and eighty State Street. So, any, uh, any loud. Noises, the rubble disturbance on the other side of that wall could have an impact on the screening. Therefore, we request that this be considered by the, of the committee. Uh, in making that determination and, uh. Well, perhaps some, um. Inscriptions could be included in, if, if it's approved, that the, the application is approved. That some restrictions be included concerning loud, uh, loud noise or, or noise levels and. Other experiences to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I think we'll close the public conference here and, um. Ask for a motion, uh, the, the planning office has given us. Some, uh, suggested conditions which could be included in a motion. Uh, you know, just read the ones from the staff memo. Uh, one, the requested use four oh seven entertainment slash club use is limited under this permit to the interior. Floor space of the structure is shown in the above referenced floor plan, including the seat count eleven is presented therein. Two, the requested use four oh seven entertainment slash club use is limited to hours, but retail services use four oh four will also be. And three, the requested use four oh seven entertainment slash club use shall not include live entertainment. I think that's always is in importance with, um, what has been presented to us tonight, so I don't think it's a. Uh, surprising about that, that that's, um, just, you know, would document what has been heard. Uh, I don't know whether anybody has any other, um. Suggestions or ideas, um, or, you know, if I can get a motion.
Oh, just, just one other question, as far as the use four oh seven, that, that doesn't have any other. Um, uh, conditions as far as the wage levels, things up, and generally what's. I would make a motion to approve the special permit with the. The special conditions that you just read presented by them.
If this is the, yeah, I should, I should know that this is the special permit for use, as opposed to the special permit for non-conformities.
Yes, yes.
Five seconds. Uh, okay, I will follow the rule on that, Alden.
Yes.
Bob? Heather?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I'm going to, so that is, uh, unanimous on that special permit. And then the second. And then I also need a, um, a motion on the special permit for non-conformities. Um, and. In the staff. In the staff, then we use the first, the special conditions, but we need to do that already with use.
I, I think it's sufficient, you can come there already with the, uh.
So it would just be a simple motion to grant the special permit. Okay, did I have a motion?
So moved, thank you.
So Heather seconds, okay. I will, uh, follow the rule again. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
So.
Thank you very much.
So, the next thing on our agenda is approval of minutes, and I have to admit that I. Somehow. Unless anybody checks, I would like you to request those. So, um, we also have. The bowling on our agenda.
CPC.
CPC, let's skip that. Uh, I, I cannot do this, but I, I hope that some member of the board will think carefully about why they want to be. The voice representative on the community preservation, because we need to get it done sometime.
Yeah, I think, I, I would say it's urgent this month, personally, but certainly by the spring of next year, we want to have plenty more rabbits, apart from the statue, we have one run down this particular board. And we also have to cycle that approval, it's a unfortunate way it's set up, our charter goes, but we have to actually cycle, even though you're on this board. We still have to cycle you through procedures in the city council, uh, appointed to the other board as a liaison. Uh, but the good thing about it is really in reality is you're only talking about a couple of meetings or springs that have been needed. And we get to recommend funding for projects that fit within, you know, well, the C P A, so. Um, not a heavy lift, I would say, but you get to, you know, go on some things or funding recommendations at city council when they're creative and interesting projects, so. Fun thing without a whole, it's certainly not as number, that would be super tight, I know you. Uh, there's typically evening meetings, typically three in the spring, they will have, uh, to deal with the applications and provide recommendations to the city council. That's basically the, the demand. The rest of the year, there are sometimes a couple of meetings, but they're not, you know, here, and they can be there percent.
What seems, yeah, what's the example of the, uh, objects?
But there's no conflict, like if you're on that and you're making recommendations and then they take them in front of us, there's.
None of that, you know, no, if you have a conflict because of the outside, that's a different situation, but there's no conflict by you serving on this board for permitting. And on that, uh, board, or a funding recommendation with the city council.
You're typically not looking at the site plans when you're looking at the finance. The fund, funding, for example, I looked at the, uh, this, this project, product, and our project. And that went through CPC, I think in February of twenty two.
Twenty two.
And, and so that was way before the E K N plans.
Well, I'm a lowly alternate, so. It helps.
If you're interested, we would love to have you do it.
I don't know, you guys, you're doing that too anxiously. That's probably because Rick is already doing something to each other, is that right? Am I stepping into something here, Andy?
I know, I would say, like I said before, it's a very light lift, uh, we sent out basically everything electronic to the board members, there's. Basically, two, three meetings in the spring, where the applications are reviewed, right? There's presentation, there's a ranking by the committee, and then that's pushed off, the city council's recommendation, the council decides what to prepare. So, uh, it's advisory, but it's a light lift, and you're just providing recommendations, it's not, you know, again, to be a bit of a supportive, I was, you know, uh. You know, looking for a board to be a, be a very important, for, uh, light lift and, and fun things to be, you know.
Well, that's Alden Moncet or somebody.
Why don't we, we can bring it up.
Yeah, we can, I mean, what, unfortunately, the chair will keep turning.
This year, high school, so next year, I'm not gonna add, my house, because of the college. Really, so I'm like a year away from.
Okay, well, we can wait a bunch, and you guys can go think about it and fight it. Okay, uh, anything else?
The only thing I would mention, I still, um, close with the city council on this, but, um, there's a possibility, uh, and I'm sorry to have to report this, but. Short-term rent units, I know, uh, we looked into it because I couldn't remember the exact number, and I wanted to confirm. We've done seven now, uh, public hearings around, the four public hearings are transferred to the last two plus years. Um, and some of us have been very heavily involved with language and versions and so forth, so. At any rate, uh, because of the timeframes involved, there's a, a significant possibility, I would say that we might, uh, advertise another hearing. Uh, probably, I would say, just in context, my expectation, that would be same version of what the council has before right now. So for all intents and purposes, uh, for efficiency, the way I look at it is. Um, it might be a need to re-advertise the hearing for the short-term run dudes to give the city council more time than they currently have, because they're running down the clock. The ninety days they have back, since our, you know, plausible to hear it. So in order to allow them more time, what might be desired here is a re-advertising of the public hearing. Most likely, I think at this point, we'd do that on August, uh, sixteen. Uh, and which was one of the reasons why I'm hoping to close, like, there to get the ad out, if it'd be, but. Um, it sounds like based on the way that they're tracking right now, the need for the council to have, you know, one or more meetings to work out the remaining details on there and after the budget cycle that we talked about. Earlier, um, that we may advertise another hearing. I would defer you as, I don't know how you wanna handle that, but I think if it's the same proposal that's in the document right now, I know the version's been out there. I would think that this board could, in, in that same night, issue was sent to the same report you've already done. Without the need for several, four, you know, more continuance of the meetings. Um, thereby allowing the city council to go right back and have their full ninety days to discuss and hopefully get to a conclusion amongst themselves. Uh, given all the difficulty of all parameters on this, so, uh, I just wanted to give you a heads-up potential meeting day, and hopefully, I hope for you. I would think we could do, you know, someone streamlined, you know, feedback back to the city council, given that we already had a lot of recent discussion about the exact same.
So, John, I, I was gonna say, if we get exactly the same ordinance, and we've had no change in ordinance. It's not special for this, and Charlie can't actually go down. Hopefully, we would be able to just, I, as part of the prep for that hearing. And would be able to resubmit the previous number, yes, as part of the package for that even. And, and then maybe that even, obviously, we have to open the public hearing, so people have to be able to comment.
Yes.
And you may very well have preached to it, but it probably wouldn't be significant.
But the, you know, I, I know that Jamie was at that last meeting, so it's a possibility that he could bring up some issues, but that, um. You know, the, the neighbor has some issues, but oh, he said to me, he's okay with the number of this, so. It would be good if we could just get that, I, I can't see any value, because we spent five meetings tweaking this.
Yeah, and I have to say, I mean, just from what I have seen, and I have tried to help out with private do it, then, so to this part, you know, now. I think at this point, probably the best thing that we can probably all do is to give the city council, leave the city council as much time as possible to. Take all these different points of feedback and parameters, and come to a conclusion as to what, what parameters they want sent, there's been a fair amount of debate, and we all know what the issues are. But hopefully speaking, they are the one that are gonna decide it, so, um, we want to handle the nation's part, if they're going to want probably the full nine days to. Have one or more meetings if we're wrong, and they will probably talk about the licensing piece with it, to work out some of the things we've gone out there.
The full ninety days brings them right into the legislature today.
I don't know what to tell you, I, I think some of us were hoping, I will, you know, I'll prefer the organ spots, I think some of us were hoping that there'd be a. Uh, you know, the council members might be coordinating on H, so that right after the budget cycle, they could dive right into it. And I don't know if that happened quite as efficiently, you know, as it could, so, uh, that may be a contributor to you, but again, the clock is already aligned, so.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I was just gonna say, clarify, basically what you said, and it's just really to give happy. Public hearing, close that, and give that, and it's the city council that had the, the additional time, right?
And do you feel like at that second ninety day start, that this will be done? That's the way to go.
Um, I would like to think so, and I. I would like to think so, and I think that if nothing else, be one thing that I could wanna, you know, maybe for a while, we might have council or somebody who will call. So, but just reminding them, for instance, we look at the, we've done several rounds of hearings and all the process of time we've put into there already. But that's also like six thousand dollars worth of just advertising for a year, just, just advertising for a year.
Right.
Because they themselves have not been able to reach consensus either. So at the end of the day, I would think that they would maybe want to include that one, because there are other zoning things we're gonna have to take up and, and they're important. And I would think I'll defer to them, but I think some of them might be looking to try to get to a finish line at some time. Even if it means, you know, somebody has to be looked at and monitored and maybe revisited at some point. This probably is a good thing for us to get something in the books. And I think, you know, we can't give them hand that we're definitely.
So, so the one thing I would, that would help, I think. And I'm not sure that we can do it. It's not our jurisdiction, but licensing is, is the big thing in the world. And if, if, if there could be a presentation about where they are with the licensing permitting. In the committee, just for the licensing commission or whatever, just to, just to give people a little bit more confidence that this is gonna be going in the right way. Because that's, it's, it's not part of our, our requirement and really depend on whether. You know, how much we have going on that night, I guess, it'd be great to do it, it have. Combined presentation about.
Yeah, it's a great point you raise, and I know you've been on that point before. My current understanding of the situation of the birthing outs of the view on, I don't know, a little situation, but. That's been recognized, a couple of things have happened recently. One was. This, you know, the setup where the city council sent something to the committee, but they also have to list it as clear to the whole and the entire council discussed it. So because they had sent the zoning amendment to the planning and development committee and the licensing work is the licensed impermiss committee. And the planning and development committee with the zoning ordinance had listed this clear to the whole, meaning all members of the council to come and discuss it, which is very helpful. In terms of reading through their quota, helping with all the, you know, moving pieces of policy that's in here. And then, but the license committee commission had, committee had done that. So council vote, the last council meeting took it out of committee and sent it back in the committee as clear to the whole. So that the council itself, with the two subcommittees and the committee of the whole, which is the council. Could in fact meet as a body, as a whole, and all of the members would be, if they were in attendance at least. Be able to weigh in on it, which is very important for the sponsor and the committee chair and the, you know, council members to be able to reach or get to a point of consensus. If they don't have full, you know, participation, discussion, it'll probably be hard to reach that final council meeting and vote where there's, in that kind of decision. So, so that's helpful because they will be able to do that. However, maybe to more to your point. I don't expect at this point for you to necessarily be getting, I'll defer to the sponsor, I'll defer to the council, you know, how they want to handle it. For the joint hearing, but I don't think, I don't suspect at this point of beginning a new version of the licensing ordinance. But I do think you might be getting as confirmation that there's an understanding of issues that you raised and the understanding of worship between the two. From the sponsor and the council members maybe. And a, I think a full recognition that there's a need at least for the council to be after, if, if nothing else, after the planning or joint public hearing. Discussing the importance of both, when, you know, which we'll probably need to emphasize again. That they will probably very likely be meeting as a, a joint discussion of both the licensing and zoning together. And probably covering some of that range of issues. I just don't know if I can promise you right now that you'll be getting an updated version of the licensing ordinance, but you may be able to, excuse me, get. The sponsor to speak to some of the changes you're looking to incorporate, if you updated version, that would then be given to the council. That would cover some of these areas. I think he's looking, because of the number of versions we've got out there previously in part. More of the difficulty to add with customer call and I am in charge of working on a number of versions, you know, for trying to do that. And that didn't quite get us anywhere, unfortunately. So. That being the case, I think he's reluctant to send out and get another version until he has a better idea of where the council is on some of these things. Which means this, which necessitates having a meeting of the full of the members and to, you know, to the whole to some degree. So I think that he's hoping to try and get some feedback and, and, you know, pick up where we're sort of left off at the planning board. Without necessarily even complicating that with a new version, but then to dive right into that with the licensing of the zoning with the council. So I'll defer to him, but I don't think you're necessarily gonna get a version. You might get speaking points to things that.
I just think it's gonna, it's gonna be helpful. To us, but also to the people who are gonna come, um, ask to the county here.
Yes.
To hear something that.
I, I think it'd be a good one that I, I can give them as well about this. I, I think you'll at least be able to get probably confirmation of at least some of the adjustments that would be made or inclusions of the components that would be in what he would bring forward. Given that the licensing ordinance committee is so out of date in comparison to, or being brought to speed at the entire level of zoning ordinance. Either way, but again, as the current sponsor of these two and are, you know, we'll see where the license piece goes, but. The current sponsor of the zoning piece, we'll have to figure out where that goes, but I hope, I don't know, we're getting a new version for it.
One more question, Moana. So if we all would like to see this ordinance passed, you know, in some form. But let's say in two years, you know, there's parts of it that some members of the community just think are not working correctly. Is it then addendums to ordinances that can take place that are.
It would just be in a matter of getting other zoning level.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can figure, again, it's, it's a question at that point, if this is just the zoning, it's the license, the licensing involved in it, you know. And what is it? But, you know, like some of this, you know, some of the parameters been put out there are sort of short-term. Sure, leashes on short-term rent units, you know, bring out what's back in. But yeah, it would be just like any other zoning amendment, if someone felt that something wasn't being mitigated for neighborhoods that their ordinance is, you know, like in place. And they would like to add another component or review process or permitting in certain district, it isn't a table. It can be brought just like any other amendment, you know.
Anybody? Want to, Charlie?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm rethinking this stuff, yes.
Hey, Rick.
I've got one. And I'm in the course of writing the letter, but. I have purchased a home out of state and will be moving at the end of the summer to Maine. So I need to, by rights, step down. From the planning board and I apologize that I'm telling you this over a Zoom call. But I will be at the next meeting face to face.
Okay, so what are you, what are you willing?
End of summer. The transition's in August, but I'm still legally a Newburyport resident until August thirty-first.
Thank you, Richard, for even just tonight, the meeting or the advance for us as soon as you're able. If you could confirm for, you know, the chair, the office, just whether it would be the final date. Maybe for just. Think about, you know, ownership in the building.
Can you be here for the sixteen?
I can be. Yep.
Well, thank you. This year.
You're welcome. It's been my pleasure to be a part of it, even if it's remotely.
Okay, all.
Motion to adjourn.
Two second. All fair.
Hi.
Your turn.